Good morning. It is Wednesday, December 20th, 9:00. We're in the Senator hearing room for a weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. Welcome, everyone. We start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful. We always start our meeting with a public comment. We do have some people. I'm not sure if they're going to -- yes, one doesn't want to speak at this time. The others will speak when we're talking about the Oregon Garden. Michael Johnson, there you are. You know the routine. You've been here before. Good morning.
For everybody who wants to know, I also -- Michael Johnson, I'm with the East Elm Suburban Neighborhood Association, but I'm also with the Master Gardeners, and Sam and I have been trying to --
Wait, now, you're not going to embarrass me right off, are you?
Make his three grape plants be the most beautiful grape plants in the entire world.
Just hang it up. Go ahead and answer it.
Sorry, Michael. It doesn't usually ring. It's the red phone to Russia. Go ahead.
And on that side note, Marion County Master Gardeners have a new website, and if you ever want to take a pruning class or any of the classes there, workshops, there is a new website, www.mariencocomga.org, and on that you can sign up for all kinds of classes. Your name is protected. Anyway, you can register, and life goes on. Today, so I've been told, it's been reported to me by PGE that streetlights are being installed on McClay, east of Hawk Middle School today. Eight more streetlights, which will light up that neighborhood, and the neighbors have been asking for that now for two or three years, and it's finally happening. After 40 years, it's nice to get some streetlights in there. What I'm really here for, though, today, and just to be brief about it, is that the Commissioners are responsible for appointing Jody Hack's replacement. I've had a chance to visit or meet with at least three of the people who are running for the Marion County, next year's Marion County Commissioner seats, and as a neighborhood, we have visited with past state representatives for the area that encompasses the Neighborhood Association, which is mostly House District 19, which is Jody Hack's seat. So as a neighborhood, we are asking the Marion County Commissioners, would you please send them our way before you make a decision? Let us take a look at them and give you our recommendation as to who we would pass on.
I meant to interrupt you. Do you want to say what I'm thinking, or go ahead?
Well, I don't know if we're thinking the same thing. I'll just say this. There is an opportunity, because I've been through this process twice on both sides, as a potential appointee. In fact, I was appointed by the Board to House District 19 back in 2005, and the process, Michael, we can't force them to go out and talk to you, but you certainly can reach out to them and have them come in and talk to you, and you can write letters of support. The public, right? I mean, you can make, you can submit letters of support to the record from your association or from individuals. I know that that process is part of it. Is that what?
Well, just a little bit different. So it goes to the Republican Central Committee first to present three to five people for us to consider.
Yes.
So that's where, if you can have input there, but then you can look at those three to five and make a recommendation. We'll certainly look at it, so absolutely we care.
At the earliest convenience, you know, if we can find out who they are, because we don't know yet.
I don't either.
Right.
There's been one in the newspaper who has made a big splash about, "Here I am." So I appreciate the information, and just let you know that as a neighborhood, we're really intent about keeping the neighborhood active, involved, and our representatives attentive to our needs.
So I'm not going to let you go. I appreciate that, Michael.
Right, exactly.
One serious and one not so serious subject before I let you go. The first is the streetlights. We did make contact with Wendy Valise from PGE that you were having trouble there, and I hope that seeing movement on the streetlights is maybe a result of that conversation. And the second part, I should tell this on myself, this grape pruning course that Michael's talking about, I went last year. Okay, I left early. I thought I got it. Now, so I get to my house and got my pruners, and they don't look anything like what it's supposed to. So I'm doing a remedial. I'm already signed up. I'm the first one, and I will stay the entire time.
Bless you.
Maybe if he stays, he would get, instead of the blue ribbon at the fair, he would get like, what was the?
Yeah, best of show. That's Cammy's deal.
Best of show. We saw.
Anyway.
Where we were putting this course on, they had about 500 lineal feet of grapes that were really tortured. They had been not taken care of very well, and so this is a real hands-on event at the end, after we'd gone through the classroom portion, and people said, "Oh, is this what you mean?" And we said, "Yep." So now we get to go back in the second year. This is going to be a three-year restoration on this piece of property. It's at Calvary Community Garden on 1550 Hoffman Northeast, and their grapes are looking much better this year than they did last year. They will look fantastic next year, and I know that you will walk away with so much.
I hope I can say the same thing about mine, but it shouldn't be able to. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just make one comment. We can ask the question about when those people are in front of us, whoever they are, what they've done to reach out to neighborhood associations, et cetera, or what they would do.
Sure.
I mean, that could be a potential question that we could ask, but I would encourage you to reach out to them as soon as you know who they are.
Yes. And anything you can do on the diversity gap, thanks.
Now, the next two that signed up will be, I'm sure we're going to be talking to, unless you had some other message you wanted for the Board on the Oregon Garden other than the presentation, or anything, then I'll just, is there? I'll call you up when the subject is, then. Thank you. So our next is a presentation. We're all set up for it. Marion and Polk Early Learning Hub. Lisa Harnish, Executive Director. Good morning.
Good morning.
See you.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Brantano and Commissioner Cameron, and legal counsel for the record. My name is Lisa Harnish, and I am the Executive Director for the Marion and Polk Early Learning Hub. It's a pleasure to be with you here this morning. I just wanted the opportunity to share with you some of the great work that's happening within our hub region and specifically in Marion County. I know that, I'm sure many of you, or you have a recollection of the Early Learning Hubs, but I think it's been a while since we've had a specific presentation on that. So today, what I plan on doing is giving you an overview of the work that is happening here in our hub region, as well as an update on how those investments are being utilized within our community. Just for a quick refresher, Early Learning Hubs were started actually in 2011 with some legislative action with then-Governor Kitzhaber, looking at the state of Oregon as a whole, and how can we do a better job to meet the educational outcomes for students in our state. As you know, we have a dubious honor of not having such great graduation rates across the state, and wanting to really invest in and look at how we are organizing ourselves as an educational system. Also, with the full understanding and recognition that what happens to children between ages zero and five, and also helping to ensure that they are ready for kindergarten, they are going to see greater success in third grade, hopefully being able to read on grade level in grade three, and then also that third-grade reading store is a predictor of high school graduation. And so knowing that we needed to do a better job in our state to really capitalize not only on the different sectors, but the different resources that we have. So that's where the legislature authorized the creation of 16 Early Learning Hubs across the state. Those could be formalized in any way that communities saw the best way to do that based on the communities. Hubs are very metric and outcome-focused. We do many, most of our funding as an Early Learning Hub does come from the state, so we are accountable to the state, but we're also accountable to the communities that we serve. And hubs are built on the collective impact model, and also the bringing together multiple sectors, including early learning, which includes childcare and Head Start and other programs, educational programs, also includes the K-12 sector, health, social services, and business, and really being able to work together in an organized and community structure to be able to meet the needs of children. I like to call this our Big Three. We have big, the Big Three goals that we have is around coordinated and aligned services, also kindergarten readiness, and family stability. The North Star for us is really kindergarten readiness. We are working hard amongst the sectors to help ensure that kids are more ready for kindergarten, and thinking about the environments that they are in from ages zero to five, as well as like, how do we connect with health and social services and other sectors to help make sure that they're ready? Also, that's the North Star for the work that we are doing. To have services that are coordinated and aligned across the continuum is what's really important for us as a community to focus in on, obviously with the overarching goal that families are stable. So the Early Learning Hub for Marion and Polk County started in 2014. We're actually one of the youngest Early Learning Hub, or excuse me, we're actually one of the oldest Early Learning Hubs, being about three and a half, close to four years old. So we're still relatively new. The mission that we have is to convene, coordinate, and collaborate, and catalyze action across the community to, again, with those, the Big Three goals that we have of ensuring kindergarten readiness. We have a, we are actually the only Early Learning Hub that is a standalone nonprofit that exists to be the Early Learning Hub, and that's unique. Many of our hub partners across the state are in education service districts, or United Ways, or community colleges, or other organizations that serve as that backbone. We're very fortunate to here to have a nonprofit that serves as our backbone organization and convening organization. We do have a very strong Board of Directors. I know it's hard to read there, but we are 22 members strong, and we do represent all of the sectors in our, the sectors represented are represented on the Board. We also have a parent advisory committee, a finance committee, and a strategic planning committee as part of the Board. And then additionally, we have a regional implementation team that helps to focus in the design of the strategies that we have as part of our strategic plan and work plan. And then we also have the collective action team, which really focuses in on the implementation of the work that we do. You have in front of you a one-pager here, just got a snapshot of it here on the screen. This is a document that is designed to really articulate some of the work that we are doing here in the hub region, and this doesn't cover everything, but this is some of the larger key pieces that we are doing. One of the signature and cornerstone initiatives that we have is kindergarten partnership and innovation. These are specific grant funds that come to us from the state that is helping us to work with our early learning and our kindergarten partners to do some vertically-aligned professional development, really helping both early learning and our kindergarten providers to be able to understand what happens in early learning and what happens in kindergarten, and most importantly, how can we do a smoother transition from an early learning environment, including Head Start, or Oregon pre-kindergarten, or childcare, to make sure that we've got that smooth transition for children going into kindergarten. One of the big focuses that our, that professional development is aligning on the newly revised, or actually newly implemented kindergarten standards across the state. We're also focusing in on connecting families with an educational and sort of an engagement opportunity with the schools, you know, connecting families with schools earlier than they may otherwise do so. We do have 31 sites that are, we focus our energy and our efforts on our elementary school catchment areas. We've been able to identify, looking at data, focusing in on the kindergarten assessment scores, focusing on free and reduced lunch, also diversity, and the third-grade reading scores. We've identified our targeted areas that we really want to work with families who are furthest from opportunity. And so that looks like 31 sites across the hub region, most of which here are in Marion County, based on the population that we are serving. One thing that is very exciting, the work that we're doing is being heavily evaluated, including the evaluation of the kindergarten assessment scores, and what we are seeing and the early returns, because the third graders this year were the very first ones to take the kindergarten assessments. And so the, in sort of the early looking at the data across the state, it is suggesting and supporting that the work that is happening to help prepare kids for kindergarten, they are more likely to be reading on grade level in grade three. So that is good news, that the work that we are doing is having an impact. Another one of our key, key focus areas is around parent education. We have a goal to normalize parent education, really making this just a part of the fabric of our community, that parents actually seek out and want to participate in parent education, and it is free of stigma. We all could use a little bit of help in parenting now and then. What we've been doing is connecting our parent education with our kindergarten partnership and innovation, and having this be focused in the schools. What we also know is that parents are more likely to attend and participate if it's in a place where people are really comfortable, or in places that they're already going. So working with our schools, working with our churches, working with other organizations where families are already coming in, such as the Y, so that, you know, they can have access to some high-quality evidence-based parent education. It's also been a way for us to build partnership with the community. We are funded to be able to help support parent education to happen across the community. Another big area of focus for the hub has been increasing our high-quality environments. Across the state, childcare providers and Head Start providers have the opportunity to demonstrate levels of competency and becoming part of a SPARC system, which is also a quality system where they have to demonstrate competencies. We've been working with our childcare providers to take part in professional development and training, and have been seeing our providers increase in their STAR ratings. So that's been really exciting to see. And so what we know is by, you know, children, not all children attend a school-based program. Many of them are in our home-based setting. And so by increasing the quality of the environment and increasing their ability to have access to an educational opportunity or a time with intention and play with a purpose, we're seeing some better results. We've also been focusing in on the workforce and providing opportunities for our childcare providers to attend college. We have credit-bearing classes for Spanish-speaking providers that are done in Spanish. So this has been a fabulous participant currently. We have 32 participants who are attending their, that will be there attending their third course come January. We also have, Preschool Promise is a grant that we have through the state, and this is a preschool program that, to me, is probably one of the most exciting things to see happen in the preschool realm. This provides for a mixed delivery, meaning it can happen in a multitude of situations. Preschool can happen in a home-based center setting. It can happen in a center. It can also happen in a school-based setting. So by working with our providers to ensure that they are offering a high-quality preschool program and serving families up to 200% of the federal poverty level, this helps us expand our options and our opportunities for families typically in the about 100% to 200% of the poverty level, they have not had access to a high-quality preschool program. This also focuses in on workforce development by offering a higher level of salary by paying our teachers commensurate with kindergarten teachers. So looking for some of that pay equity, and also to professionalize the workforce. Some additional things that are happening across the region is, you may have seen Vroom, which is actually an app that we're promoting heavily through many of our organizations, and this is an app that families can download that is, offers them some brain-building tips to do with their children. And this is something that really promotes family engagement. It also promotes that brain development and helping to form those synapses. Also, we've been focusing in our region around providing some consistent and core messages around early learning, and also bringing our different sectors together and helping to align health and social services and K-12 and early learning, and being, really putting kindergarten readiness at the forefront. Also have been focusing in on trauma-informed care and trauma-informed practices for our providers. Many of the families that we are serving, and the families often furthest from opportunity, are ones that have encountered significant trauma in their lives, and we know, research shows that that trauma then really has an impact, an overall negative impact on their overall health outcomes. And then also utilizing and focusing in on equity to make sure that we are working where the need is the greatest, and also helping to make sure that we're paying attention to some of the issues that are facing our various committees, communities, particularly around some of the immigration and work that is happening, and some of the, some of the things that are happening from an immigration point of view, and helping to make sure that our kids are not forgotten. There are some new regional initiatives I just wanted to quickly let you know about that I'm very excited about. One is we've received a grant from the Behavioral Care Network that will allow us to increase capacity of our early learning providers in working with children who are experiencing some social-emotional concerns, and also providing some of that onsite coaching and mentoring for providers, focusing not only on their environment, but then also on some specific behaviors that they may be working with children on. It also will allow us the time or the ability to provide some parent education for families who have children who may be experiencing some social-emotional concerns. We also are working with our medical community and the Education Service District to ensure that we've got clear developmental screening pathways between the medical community when they are referring children who are not meeting their developmental milestones, so that we can help ensure that families are getting the services that they need, and that when they do not, when they do not, are not eligible for Education Service District services, that we are able to wrap around them and provide some other resources to help meet those needs. And so that grant comes to us through Willamette Validity Community Health, our CCO here in this region. The third and final one that we are really excited to get started on is being able to expand our parent education opportunities throughout the hub region and partnering with our medical clinics to have, in partnership, having patients attend parenting education to really help meet the needs of the families. So, that's wrong slide. And so with that, I will come to a close, and if there are any questions that you may have, then I'd be happy to entertain any questions. We are very excited about the work that is happening here, specifically in Marion County, and love to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here and sharing, and I was just looking at the website, Lisa, and when you mentioned about making, you know, parenting easier, and I went there, and it looks like it's curriculum that you sell.
Uh-uh. We do not, we do not sell any.
Well, or somebody's selling it. So when I looked at make parenting a pleasure curriculum, and I'm just curious how it's $899 that somebody can purchase that, it links from your website to there. So I'm just curious how I was looking as a parent, I was trying to think of, okay, if I go to this website, where do I go to get these resources for myself?
So if you go to parentinghub.org, that is our website, and that's where you can look at the, at the different parenting.
That's where I'm at.
Education opportunities. There is a link to the Making Parenting a Pleasure website, so you can see what the curriculum may cover, but we do not sell that. In fact, we do not have any of, any of our providers charge parents at all for attending the course. We provide all of the materials.
Yeah, I was just having a hard time. I was trying to put myself listening.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And I went to the parentinghub.org programs, and I was looking to try to sign up as a parent, where would I go to get help?
So if you go to the events, events, and then it has the calendar there that shows the different trainings that are offered throughout the community and with community partners, you do have the ability to sort by the curriculum name, so we do have that ability, as well as searching by state, or excuse me, by city or area.
Oh, look at it. Yeah, events calendar.
Yep.
Great.
And that also includes not just parenting education, but other events that are happening in the, in the community. The goal of that website is to provide families access and a connection with many providers, but then also connecting them with information around developmental milestones, things that may help them in terms of, you know, here's, here's where my child should be. We have blogs where, you know, we have bloggers throughout the community that are writing for us, and then other information around some of our initiatives and our programs.
I see it now. Thank you.
But we do not charge for our services. I just want to make that really clear.
Well, I just got to that page, and it was like a curriculum that was being sold to somebody based on.
I will, I will look at those links to make sure that that's really clear, because I do not want that to be out in the community that way, so.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
If I could, thank you for coming this morning. It looks like you've been busy organizing and actually now providing those services in these last three or four years. I was going to ask a question that you did pretty much answer in your presentation. Some years ago, as a member of Children and Families Commission, I was alerted to and made the connection on that third-grade reading score, the indicator of success that it was. So I'm very, very interested. I'm happy to hear that you're seeing positive results now, and I would like to hear more in the future if those numbers do indicate. I tried real hard. How can I affect third-grade reading? We started book drives, which I think were fine. We did a number of things. Spent some money, but I couldn't move the needle at all.
Well, I mean, it's challenging, right? And that data is very early. We don't have it down to our community level yet. I'm hoping to be able to, to be able to really drill down, but even just having that early, early information, I think, is really helpful for us to be able to really wrap around. wrap around as a community, what can we be doing more of. We are so incredibly lucky in this community, we have such a committed, committed community to help kids and families, and I think this will help us even align our, our, our services even more.
You know, kind of relating to those scores, I saw something a year or two ago that Oregon was one of the la, lowest states in the nation, and Marion County's like thirty-four out of thirty-six in Oregon, so are we about the worst in the United States? And I don't know how that happens, but I don't want it to stay that way.
Me either, me either, so let's, let's work together on it.
Great.
Super.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I saw your credit card, did you order that package? Eight hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Where's my credit card? Did you take it?
It's a, well, yeah, I got it for you, you're gonna like it.
I don't think I have, I think my limit is eight-hundred, so eight ninety-nine will work.
All right. Our next item's a consent calendar, Commissioner, if you would.
Okay, Mr. Chair, so we got everybody here?
No.
Oh, they're coming later, okay. So, Mr. Chair, I'll move the consent calendar, first item on the consent calendar is to approve a community development lock grant collaborative application with the cities of state in Almsville, Turner, and Mount Angel. Under Business Services, approve a recommendation to approve, to adjust pay grade for classification number zero-nine-five Deputy County Administrative Officer. Under Community Services, approve an order appointing Orman Fredericks to the county, Marion County Children and Families Commission with the term ending January thirty-first, two-thousand eighteen. Under Health, approve an order appointing Liam June, Fred Relgard, and Jamie Farish to the Health Advisory Board with terms ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Under Public Works, receive hearings officers' recommendation and schedule a public hearing for January third, two thousand and eighteen for zone change comprehensive plan, ZCCP, case number one-seven-dash-zero-zero-two, Video Acquisitions, Inc., Clerk's File Number five-seven-three-seven. And approve, also under Public Works, approve Amendment Number One to Public Improvement Agreement with KSH Construction Company to incorporate change orders one-dash-seven and increase the contract amount to one million, two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand, fifty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. And then under the Sheriff's Department, approve Amendment Number Two to the Contract for Services with the Oregon Department of Corrections to extend the term through January thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen and add five-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand dollars for the Women's Reentry Program.
Thank you, I'll second the motion. I just want to make one comment on, on the first one, the CDBG grant is of interest to me, it is an application, but if we're successful, it's finally an opportunity, an underserved group of people in the county, mobile homeowners who don't own their property, they haven't been eligible for any types of programs, this would address them, so I'm hoping we're successful. Anyway, I second the motion, anything else?
No, that's good.
All right, call a question on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Now, a group that's special to me, we have a recommendation to accept the Oregon Garden Foundation Grant Report and Draft Budget Proposal, Proposal. Tammy Getch and a new executive director from the Oregon Garden Foundation, Allison Alley-Pennell, welcome, oh, and some others, and if you'll introduce everybody, and I'll just let you go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Tamara Getch, I'm the Director for Community Services, we're pleased to be here today to talk to you about the Oregon Garden and tell you a little bit about what's happening. As you can see, we have a great panel, and I'm gonna let them introduce themselves.
Good morning, I'm Mary McNatt, and you folks appointed me to the Oregon Garden Foundation Board in two thousand and twelve, and I thank you for that opportunity. I currently serve as Secretary-Treasurer of that board. I have three wonderful women with me here today, and I would just like to say a couple of things about each one of them. I'd like to introduce Marilyn Davis. Marilyn is a full-charge bookkeeper who specializes in nonprofits, and she came to work with us in the spring, and she has undertaken the gigantic task of organizing our finances in computer form and transferring all of those records to a form that is certainly going to improve our functioning in the future. We thank her for all her efforts there. On my right is Dellen Kitchen. Dellen works for Moonstone Garden Management, and she is in charge of garden membership. In the three years that she's been in charge of that program, she has increased membership every year. In January, she will take on an additional responsibility, she will become the Assistant Garden Manager. So that's another big job. Finally, I'd like to introduce Allison Pennell. Alley joined us the first Monday of December, she is our new Development Director, and we're thrilled to have her. She hit the ground running, she has already met with volunteers, donors, potential donors, partners, staff, she's met a lot of people, done a lot of talking in the last two weeks, and we're very happy to have her on board. All of these women share a few traits that I think are very admirable. They all are professionals, they all are dedicated to the success of the Oregon Garden, and they're all really pleasant people who are fun to work with, so we're happy to have all of them working with the Oregon Garden.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mary, I'm very pleased to meet you, Commissioner Cameron, and nice to see you, Commissioner Brentano. I do just have a little bit of an introduction, we have proposed to the Commissioners our draft budget, so if you have any questions after the presentation, I can answer them, but I just wanted to also just give a little update about what garden projects have been happening. I'm a graduate of Oregon State University, I'm a proud Oregonian, and I'm very happy to be taking on the role of Development Director here. Although the position was vacant since April, the garden did not miss a beat, the volunteer programs were going with many renovations and improvements to the garden structures. We got a Rotary Grant from the Salem Rotary Club, which built a beehive structure as well as a, a covered area for it, which is a great display for public to come out, especially with so much interest in pollinator health and awareness to the bee population. We've also kept, the bricks program has been going even though the position was vacant, and we do have volunteers databasing those bricks and repairing old bricks to make sure that's a sustaining valuable program to people that are patronizing the garden. We have Christmas in the garden going on, that's with our, our partner, Moonstone, and their resort is bringing people back to the garden even in a very off-season time, so the foundation does receive the TOT funds for that, which are expected to be about twenty-eight thousand this year, and they also get a dollar for each attendee. Our membership, as Mary mentioned, is continuing to prove year after year, which is showing a very positive trend for public gardens and for the public's support of the garden. And so, membership revenue was up nine percent over two thousand and sixteen, but twenty-eight percent twen, since two thousand and fifteen, so we anticipate another, another increase in that, which will, will add to our, our imprint in the community and to help extend the donor base as well, and, and then our funding for education, we are right now awaiting a proposal for the Collins Grant, which was put together by the OGF Board with cooperation with our partner, OFRI, the Oregon Forest Resource Institute, and I have a little presentation about that. So the main education, the main education program at the garden is these field trips that OFRI helps plan the curriculum, but the Oregon Garden Foundation funds. So one-day field trip in the Discovery Forest area of the Oregon Garden provides the hands-on learning and, for students, and many of these students don't have a lot of science in their classes, but these, these field trips do support the national and the state science The, the, sorry, the, OFRI does offer pre and post lessons to help the teachers so that they can take this one-day field trip and take it back to the classroom so that they can make the most of this and add it. It goes really well with the fifth-grade curriculum, and so it's primarily fifth-grade students that are served by these programs, but every once in a while, there are other, other grade levels that participate. And the education is all provided by trained educators, not volunteers, and so that's where some, where our education funding primarily goes, is to support these educators' salaries, and it's free to all the students to participate, including the busing. So as you can see with a closer look, this is our two thousand and sixteen statistics of who attended the field trip, so we have Benton, Clackamas, Lynn, Marion County in the center with the most students served by a landslide, Multnomah, Polk, Washington, and Yamhill, and then, as you can see, the lighter green is the, is, is students served, but then the darker green is additional students served that are in Title I schools, so this program is really going to many children who don't otherwise get a lot of environmental education field trips. And then these are our two thousand and seventeen statistics, so you can see that Marion County still is at the, at the top there. And so of the total students that are served, we have more Marion County than all the other counties combined, so this is a great program just because of its location, it's very well sought after by educators in the Marion County community. And this is all in collaboration with all the partners, as I mentioned, the Oregon Garden Foundation serves the, the educators' salaries, and then with Marion County, the City of Silverton, the Oregon Forest Resource Institute, and Moonstone Management, the garden manager. And this is just a quote from one student, "So, thank you for the free field trip and bus to the Oregon Garden, I learned that plants and animals use adaptations to survive. For example, animals may be brightly colored to warn other animals that they're dangerous, plants may have thorns to defend them from predators, and thanks again for a great day." And I also do have a few cards that students have written to share with the Commissioners if you'd like to see.
Better artists than you or I.
Sure.
It just really shows how much the kids are getting out of these.
And what grade level, Allison, are these?
It's primarily fifth grade, in the past, there was other education at the garden, and so the current curriculum of the things go best to fifth grade, but once in a while, like, an educator will sign up, and so once in a while, another K through five class comes.
All right, questions or comments? Maybe I'll, maybe I'll start, you mentioned the budget, we have it here in front of it, in front of us, it looks like there's some positive number at the end, is my key number, anything we should know about that budget?
Um, well, for this, this, for this first year, our grants and our emphasis will be on education, we just put out the year-end appeal, so what we're trying to do is, we've done the Collins Grant, was submitted by the OGF Board with help from OFRI, and, but we, that's a kind of a one-time-to-get-you-started grant, so our emphasis this year is really to get some sustaining programs, some sustaining funds that will be reoccurring year after year to pay for the educators, but we're hopeful that the Collins Grant will come through.
I know there's a golf tournament planned.
Yes.
And would that go into that same category?
Yeah, that'll go sixty, two-thirds percent is, is slated to go toward the educators, so that's kind of our main revenue stream idea going into the future.
Okay.
They should have a fishing tournament.
Yeah, something I could do, I know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah, golf tournament. No, I just want to say thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
I hadn't had a chance to meet you before today, so it's great to have you on board, and a lot of work to do, and long before I got here, I know Commissioner has been heavily involved and done a lot of work, and, and Board members, thank you for your service too, to the garden, and I just love to celebrate that we paid those bonds off this year, did we make that last payment yet, Tamara?
Yes, John said that he signed it earlier this month.
That, that is really good news that, and I, I share with people, and it's pretty obvious there that it is, it seems like it has been the Marion County Garden, and it's called the Oregon Garden, and we want to spread that around and try to, try to make sure that the whole state of Oregon understands the gym that we have right here in, in Silverton, in, in Marion County, so I know you've got some work ahead of you, and it sounds like you're enthusiastic about doing that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I've got two or three more things, Bonnie, Mary didn't mention that she's also the chair-elect of the foundation, and I'm real happy about that, but not just for my personal sake, but I think she'll do a wonderful job, you can see her commitment and enthusiasm about it, happy about it. Alley didn't mention a lot, and, and again, something I'm enthused about, a connection with the Nursery Association growers, and try to, try to align that up with the Oregon Garden like it should be, I'm, I'm excited about that. And then the last I have, you mentioned Christmas in gardens, big event, driven by, haven't stopped in yet this year, but it goes till when, and?
It goes through the thirty-first, right?
So you're seeing the, oh, it's a week or so off, yeah, it's sometime.
So Santa leaves Friday, but.
They've had beautiful, clear nights for most of them, and I think the best weather since they've started, so I hope it's as successful as it's been in growing.
And no cracks in the ice this year?
Well, I'm afraid of it. He's referring to the ice skating, and I have enough trouble walking anymore, let's just let it go at that.
I shouldn't talk, I haven't been on the ice for years, so.
So Commissioners, you mentioned the draft budget, that is before you, for review today, we don't need approval unless you have input that you would like the Board or the Foundation Board members to consider. You will, in two thousand and eighteen, receive a more finalized approved budget from the foundation in two thousand and eight, early two thousand and eighteen, for your consideration.
Okay, we're asked today to accept the foundation report and the draft budget proposal, so.
So Mr. Chair, I'll move that we accept the recommendation, to accept the Oregon Garden Foundation Grant Report and the draft budget proposal.
All right, second the motion, it's been moved second, accept, report and budget proposal, any further discussion? I hear none, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you, thanks for coming in, and thanks for your involvement with the garden, all of you.
Thank you very much.
All right, oh, you want them back?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah.
We might have some other road shows to.
That'd be good, yeah.
All right, our next item, we consider a recommendation to accept the Solid Waste and Energy Final Report from Gersham, Brechner, and Bratton, Brian May, Steve Simmons.
Yes, good morning.
Go ahead, Brian.
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record, Brian May, Public Works, Environmental Services Division, and with me today.
And I am Steve Simmons with the consulting firm, Gersham, Brechner, and Bratton.
So, as mentioned before you, we have a, a report for acceptance for Marion County's solid waste and energy, but first I want to kind of do an introduction of the, the GBB team, it's a little easier for me to say, appreciate Commissioner's ability to say Gersham, Brechner, and Bratton. Combined experience we have on this team is well over a hundred and thirty years in solid waste industry. Been very tickled with just the devout knowledge that this team brings to the table to assist Marion County as we go forward with evaluation and preparing for our contract negotiations with Cavanta. That's really the driving force for this report, our contract expires September twentieth of two thousand and nineteen with Cavanta Marion. Steve brings a lot to the table on the energy side, along with project management experience, also Harvey Gersham, with just management plans and understanding of solid waste systems. Doug Grenon with J.R. Millar and Associates was a key piece of this group, also with transfer station knowledge, background in mixed-waste processing facilities, and then another key member is Irian Sanger with Sanger Law. One of the components that's very key to our contract with Cavanta Marion is the power purchase agreement, the electrical revenue. Irian brings a lot of knowledge of Oregon-based contracts and knowledge of PGE and just power purchase agreement and negotiations. So just a little bit of a background as far as the team, what brings us here today? How did we get to this point? In preparing for contract negotiations, we knew we had some key things we needed addressed, and we wanted to understand our solid waste system in more detail, and again, some of the power requirements behind that, and just other options. So the timeline up before you is just kind of how we started, we started with a formal request for proposal, clear back in October of sixteen, just to kind of give you a feel for how long this took. The Board accepted the contract with GBB in March, and from there, we've been on many facility tours, interactions with yourselves, the Board, key, key members of our integrated solid waste system with Marion County Solid Waste, also with the Murph, Marion Resource Recovery Facility in Cavanta, and understanding just our entire system. We had a. We had a board retreat where I appreciate you guys hanging in for us for almost four hours and going in some grave detail into our system and kind of things we want to look forward to in the future. This has all been brought forward and was reviewed by our SWAMAC at the end of November in their November meeting, and again, this is where we're bringing it forward for you today. The scope of work, we've kind of defined as a Phase One, Phase Two. Phase One is really what's encompassed in the report, so it's all but the very last bullet listed here on the page, which encompasses kind of those key elements and things we wanted identified before we went into contract negotiations. So Phase Two is literally just contract negotiations. Understanding the timeline, that it's taken basically a year, a little over a year to get us through Phase One, we want to make sure we had ample time for contract negotiations with Cavanta, knowing that that was coming up in September of 2019. So that kind of gets us to where we're at today, and I'll turn over to Steve to kind of give a high-level overview of the report.
Sure. Well, thank you, Brian. So, just to kind of recap the process that we went through in preparing this report, we had our engineers go in and go through your existing infrastructure and look at each element of how you're managing your waste today. Tours of the Cavanta Marion Plant, reviewed the MRF, the Browns Island landfill, where you dispose of your construction demolition waste, the Garden Foundation with the commingled recycling, and the transfer stations. And we did a kind of a fresh eyes perspective of the elements of your system today. And then we looked at the regional setting. How is waste kind of managed within the state of Oregon? What facilities might be out there that you could take advantage of and utilize? And then with Irian, again, as Brian said, a lot of key thing is about the energy sales. And so we took a deeper dive, looking at energy production and the value of energy that might be available for you going forward in the future. In looking at the projections and out over time, we did what many good consultants might do. We looked not just at what you're doing today, what you might be doing out over time in kind of five-year increments. So in solid waste management, kind of go, there's a couple of major trend lines in the background, always going on, affecting your needs. One, and primary one is population. So we looked at the population projections in the county out through the time of 2040. And as expected, you're going to have a growing population. One of the other key factors, though, is changes in personal behaviors and industry trends. And what you see across the country is, year over year, people just generate less waste per person. And this is a trend line across, across the country. And that's really reflected in the very bottom line there in the per capita waste disposal. So you've got two trends out into the future. You're going to have more people, but we would expect those people to generate less pounds of waste per year. But overall, the shown in the, really the second line, you're going to have a positive upward trend. So you're more likely to have more waste to manage in 2030 and the 2040 timeframe than you have today. That's really an overall trend line. There's going to be more to manage. When you look at the regional setting, there's, there's not a lot of landfills in terms of numbers in Oregon, but there's some very big landfills. Most of the available landfill capacity, should you choose to go that way, is up in the Columbia River Gorge. There's three very large landfills owned by the large publicly traded solid waste companies, Waste Management Republic, Waste Connections. Those are up there in the gorge. More locally, you have the Coffin Butte landfill owned by Republic here, regionally available to you, but with some limitations on its future and its life. So if, and we get into the recommendations sections, if you would look to go not to the, manage it here locally in a facility, you're more likely would be transferring waste quite a ways of distance up into the landfills in the gorge.
So kind of stepping in, looking at the resource recovery, we wanted to understand the policies and programs and initiatives that are kind of statewide that are impacting Marion County. A lot of that was DEQ's 2050 vision, incorporated more direction, not just to recycling, but more the reduce and reuse elements. Specifically, Senate Bill 263 has kind of changed the targets for the state of Oregon. Food waste recovery by 2025, they want to achieve 25%. An additional plastic recycling of waste should be at 25% also, with a target of 2025 of having carpet being recovered at about 25%. This also culminates into an overall state recovery goal of 55% by 2025. These are just some factors of things we wanted to consider and be aware of as we were going through the analysis. We also want to understand just energy from waste facilities, what was happening, possibilities of expansions, what was entailed in that. Additionally, continue to look at ash as a beneficial reuse and what options we might have there. Mixed waste processing facilities, this was kind of a new piece to us, and looking at the commercial waste stream and understanding what we might be able to recover from that and help us benefit for recovery goals. Organics is continuing to be a conversation. We have our curbside program for residential for most communities in Marion County, where you're allowed to put your food scraps in. Commercial collection is more of a voluntary basis today, but wanted to know what that looks like. Also, part of the DEQ information was a new change in 2022 for multifamily complexes. Today, as it stands, the owner of the complex determines whether recycling services provided by 2022. That now shifts to the tenant themselves, which can definitely be a bigger impact. As we look forward and look at mixed waste processing, that, that would be kind of deemed part of that commercial waste stream and could have some, some benefit for us as we move forward. In looking at all this, we wanted to understand, you know, what are recovery rates for, how much material we're going to landfills, and what was the overall impact to the Marion County Integrated Solid Waste System? So the scenarios that we evaluated kind of consists of, what are we doing today? Where's our material going? We spent a lot of time looking at flows and diagrams, looking at where we're at. So as a status quo, Cavanta Marion, we have that capacity, that we're filling it as full as we can, and we have additional tons coming out there. One thing that we also have is the MRF, we refer to as Marion Resource Recovery Facility. It handles primarily all of our transfer station waste, try to again, recover as much as we can, addition to the roll-off or the open drop boxes from our franchise haulers. Today, all our excess, in a sense, waste that we can't manage through Cavanta is being shipped off to Coffin Butte. And the number one scenario, and just not in any particular order, that was evaluated, was looking at just landfill only. So if something, you know, for some reason, we looked at what Cavanta was not part of the system going forward, what would that look like? How did just landfill shape up? So basically, no incinerator option. Scenario two kind of took our status quo and added a mixed waste processing facility to the system, again, to kind of target that commercial waste volume, looking at additional recovery, and at the same time, providing some more capacity in sense at Cavanta to handle that curbside collected material that doesn't have near the recoverables in it. The third scenario was again, the expansion of Cavanta itself at two different levels. One, at 90,000 tons per year, which is about half of what it is today, or a third boiler, or 200,000 tons, which would be almost a doubling of that facility.
So after we, we gathered all our data and we put it in the blender and we mixed it up, we came up with a few conclusions to recommend, to take in recommendations. So as today and over the next couple of years, as the Cavanta contract is in force, it is your lowest cost alternative, is to continue with the status quo. There are, however, some things that could be considered that would increase your diversion rates from the landfill. One, as Brian mentioned, the addition of a mixed waste processing facility, kind of to the front end of it, at a different site, but think of it in the front end of it as waste would flow. It'd go through this facility first, and additional recoverable recyclable materials that maybe should have been in the, in the recycling bin, but didn't get put in the recycling bin, they got put in the wrong bin, they could be recovered. That would cost more, but it would increase your diversion rate and your recycling rate. The other thing that you could look at is the organic stream. Food waste is one of the largest single components of what's in our waste stream today. And food waste can be managed with other alternatives, getting it out, composting, anaerobic digestion, energy production from that. So that's an option that you could consider looking at today or in a future system. From landfill diversion, these would add, you know, 7.3% or 13.8% incrementally to your diversion rate today, which is about 52%. The highest cost options, though, are the expansion of the waste energy facility. These, as we said earlier, these kind of facilities are very heavily driven towards energy prices, and we all know that energy prices are really, across America, at historically inflation-adjusted lows. So if you've got two revenue streams, one's energy and one's tipping fees, and energy are down, tipping fees are going up, to be able to justify an expansion of the facility. So an expansion of the facility, we think, would result in a tipping fee in excess of $100 per ton. I'm going on unless you tell me to run. But additional analysis will be needed to confirm those numbers. So the best approach that we felt was to consider a phased implementation of scenarios. You might look at a mixed waste processing facility now, additional expansion of the energy from waste if it needed in the future. So our recommendations certainly are to continue the relationship with Cavanta Marion through the end of its contract and to seek a renewal of that agreement. That's really what this has all been set up to lead to is the beginning of serious contract negotiations with Cavanta for an extension. We don't believe it makes a lot of sense to, at this point, to continue on with expansion discussions. It just doesn't seem to be economically viable for you at a tipping fee projection of over $100 a ton. A detailed analysis of mixed waste processing, there's a lot of technologies out there, there's things that could, could be implemented at a more economical price point that could increase your diversion rates. So I'm looking at the reuse of the bottom ash as an aggregate. There's been a lot of technology development in this area over the past few years, and when your facility started 30, 30, almost 30 years ago, the only thing that was taken out of the residue of the ash stream were the ferrous metals. It was real simple. You ran the whole thing over a magnet. If it came out, you pulled it out. That was very easy to do. Technologies today have evolved to where in new, people are not only getting the ferrous metals, but the aluminum out, and in some cases, processing this ash, going after more precious metals, gold, silver. There's, there's a lot of precious metals in there in very minute quantities. So technology has evolved to the point that facility operators are looking at that and looking even to mine ash that was maybe buried 20 years ago. And you've got about a million tons buried out in the landfill today that's all in one place. So all of those are things that you could look at with new technology that's available today. Developing the financial analysis scenarios for all of that. And our other recommend, major recommendation to you was to, to engage with Irian and participate in the PPA negotiation and approval process with, with Cavanta, and I believe you've done that already.
So some secondary recommendations that were kind of scattered throughout the report, we wanted to make sure we pulled out and, and made note of, and this is more specific to our existing infrastructure and, and making sure that we looked at some of the issues that had arose. With the increased economy and the benefits we have, we've mentioned tonnage increasing, we've seen that impact at our transfer station, specifically at Skirrs. We feel the need for a master site development plan that'll just incorporate a lot of issues with volumes, customers, how we use material, and how we kind of progress to the future. It's a, it's a key piece of our infrastructure. With the MRF, the MRF has kind of taken on its own, own mission, and it's been a huge piece of our system, where it's just taking in a number of different things. It started out as a construction and demolition facility for recovery. It's now accepting yard debris, it's processing wood, it's handling commingled materials. It's just kind of almost growing past its means, and, and that facility needs some upgrades to move forward. Browns Island landfill, again, with this increased construction and demolition that's happening within Marion County, the site life is down to about 11 to 12 years that we have left out at Browns Island. So we really need to understand what the future of Browns Island looked like, what we wanted to do. Do we need to expand? Do we need to figure out ways to move that material elsewhere? But we want to definitely develop a comprehensive plan around that. Cavanta Marion, again, a key piece of this process, as, was brought up in some of the discussions around the power purchase agreement, was a potential detuning of the turbine from 13.1 megawatts to 10, and that was driven primarily by set pricing structure from PGE if you were a 10-megawatt or less facility. So there's some, some financial benefit to that. That was one thing that Cavanta's considering. Another issue that arose is that our tonnage that we're processing through Cavanta is diminishing. We're seeing 20, 25-year record lows last year, and how many tons are actually put through the facility? And at the same time, we're seeing natural gas utilizations increasing. So we want to understand what that looks like. Is that based on an age of the facility or an operation? But we want to get that information from Cavanta. And Steve touched on this piece, is we do have a revenue share in our current contract with Cavanta for the, the ferrous metals content, but not the non-ferrous, which is kind of that new market that's arisen with the new technologies as they increase, which brings the next bullet, which is that enhanced metal recovery. There's a technology out there that allows that ash to be kind of taken finer and finer to get those precious metals, and some of those are actually in the Northwest today and being utilized. Taking what we did as Marion County for metal recovery to a much further level, just in that fine, minute detail. And then again, the secondary recommendation on the mixed waste processing is really getting the detailed waste composition study from DEQ that's being updated as of today. We've been operating with these initial recommendations on data from '09, so we really want to understand what Marion County's solid waste looks like and how it can be utilized for recovery. With that analysis and having that kind of detail, the facility would be constructed around Marion County's solid waste specifically to boost recovery and determine the appropriate processing equipment that we'd put in there. So I guess summarizing this, I really want to thank the GBB project team, the knowledge they brought forward for us in a time over the last year in putting this report together and, and getting us prepared for contract negotiations with Cavanta. But at this time, turn it back over to Commissioners if you have any questions for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank to both of you for being here, Steve, Brian, appreciate it. I know you put a lot of work into this. Question I had on the population data, did you use Portland State's information?
Yes, that was utilized.
Okay. And then, when we got into the, in fact, we're going to be educated, we want to continue to be educated on this issue. I've got a point here, the carbon footprint of transferring waste to a landfill in eastern Oregon versus Cavanta. Anybody have any information on what that looks like over a period of, you know, all the trucks, the travel, and then you still have the, the carbon release over there, et cetera, over years? Has anybody done anything with that, or is there any research going on with that? Because people are, people are pointing to a energy facility over here, and they're not necessarily considering all that other big picture stuff.
Yeah, we, we did not model that as a part of this effort, but I would, would point out, the EPA does have what they call their WARM model, which is a waste reduction model, in which we could model that, and it would show you here or from a, a big picture. item, here's the greenhouse gas profile of processing this through a material recovery or through a waste energy plant, and here would be the greenhouse gas profile, trucking at 200 miles, putting it into a landfill, accounting for, say, the methane gas that would escape from the landfill. So we certainly could model that for you in, in the Phase 2.
Well, that'd be great. Mr. Chair, I'm, I know we're not necessarily providing direction here today, but that's something that I think really needs to, to have some facts behind it versus people are just spewing, spewing words right now.
And, and the point of it, it's, it's an accepted EPA model.
Right.
It wouldn't be something that we would go up and develop on our own.
Correct.
This is the model the EPA is giving the industry to use.
Okay, good. And I guess this last, well, I got two more. Lowest cost, I know you had that up there, the lowest cost versus other benefits. And I, and I'm, you know, I know when we look at strictly dollars, obviously, that's really important because our citizens, citizens are concerned about what their garbage rates are and, you know, who's going to pay for it, it's them, the businesses and the, and the families that live in Marion County. But the other benefits, we probably didn't talk about or put a dollar amount on those things as we look at that, right? I mean, it was just strictly dollars.
Correct. It was, as you pointed out, the carbon footprint wasn't addressed, it was more looking at kind of the cost structure of the system as it sits today, and if we had incremental processing, what that would look like. Back to the point of, of the, the carbon footprint, by handling and processing that material within Marion County to kind of give us time for that next disposal opportunity, we'd have a lot of time to do that analysis and determine the best economic benefit and environmental benefit for Marion County.
And then, I guess my last thing was, I was listening, you know, we're talking about the, the, the one slide up there about population growth, but yet, waste per capita going down.
Yes.
And, you know, as, as somebody who went through our master's recycling class, I'm not the perfect one, obviously, the chair will make sure that, I'm trying to get to perfection. But that first one is the reducing and the education of people and, and businesses, et cetera, of, of how do we change packaging, how do we change habits? And I was just sitting here, and I didn't want to raise my water bottle while we were talking about that, but...
Right.
But, but there's no label on it, you can see that I, I continue to refill these things and stick them in my refrigerator, so I think I probably get 10 or 20 uses, but now that I've got this sore throat, I probably should throw that one away and start over again. But I mean, just, just that whole education process that we do through our environmental services of, if we focus on that, that'll help a lot with what we're trying to accomplish here.
Exactly.
Continue that. I didn't see that in there as an education recommendation, but kind of the status quo, potentially, is that where we're at with that?
Yeah, and that's part of, I guess, the, the vision of Marion County Integrated Solid Waste System, is that there's so much side of the, the education and outreach and understanding what products and how we use them, and again, to promote the reuse elements and not go more to the recycle disposal incineration. That'll be a very key part of our future.
I just thank you very much, Mr. Chair, thank you for letting me ask a few questions.
Well, thank you. I spent yesterday going over the report pretty well, as you know, I have a background in solid waste industry and quite interested in it, but I still had some eye-opening things there that, I don't want to get into them too much now, but the capital needs at the burner, I feel like it's being kept up, but your report indicates there's some items that need to be addressed with a big price tag. Our vulnerability on this Covanta lawsuit with PGE, I knew I knew about it, but it made me rethink. Funny situation where most of the benefit for the electric sale go to the county, but we don't do the direct negotiating, that needs to change. Electrical rate study, one that you didn't get into too much, that is current, the recycling markets, especially one of the recommendations for this, oh, I forget what you call it, but a new MRF. That implies a good value for the products, it does to me, anyway. And that isn't the situation in today's world, unless it means that you're providing a cleaner product that truly is a commodity that can be sold. I'm hoping that's part of it, but that goes through my mind. Kind of wrote a couple of things that I can't even write. Plastics was, first of all, yeah, I don't ever forget, I'm not a big fan of food waste diversion, other than what we're doing. When you say digester, I get real nervous.
Okay.
Haven't known any of those that truly do anything but stink. But plastics, it was a battle that I was in 40 years ago, and it still goes on, it's just wrong, other than they finally put a deposit on these kind of bottles. But the people who produce the plastics and market it and profit off of them, they just leave it for the rest of us to take care of. They don't try to consolidate the different numbers into, into smaller classes, they don't do anything, nor do they contribute, and how they scale by, escape by is just wrong. Anyway, I liked your report.
Okay.
We have a lot of work to do, but...
I don't think I get my dime back on this because I took the label off.
I'm sorry, I don't know what to do about it. But if the plastics people had put some money into the final disposition of the product, of their products, you should be able to turn it in somewhere.
Actually, this has probably been around long enough that I only had, got charged a nickel for it, so now I...
All right. Let's see if I can read one more of my notes. Oh, just some comments, and I've said this before, but I'm still taken back, you talk about reduce rates in your projection, reduce volumes. When I was in the garbage collection business, done in 2000, and even at that time, I think I can say this, that 90% of the people, the customers in Marion County had one 32-gallon can a week. Maybe there was some recycling programs going on at that time, but they weren't very, very involved. But now today, I look around my neighborhood, it looks like most people have a 60-to a 90-gallon garbage can, they have another can for yard debris, another can for mixed paper, and a small, what is that size basket, 13-gallon or so?
Yep.
For, for other recyclables. So where did all that material come from? You know, that's, per household, it's five or six times what we had in 2000. How's that happen?
Mr. Chair, I want to comment on that, I, I just tell you, as, 23 years ago, starting a restaurant business, we used to bring our salad in in cardboard cases, I don't think they were, I think they were wax-lined, so they weren't able to be recycled, but we used to bring heads of lettuce in, right?
Yeah, I remember those.
One container. Now, it comes in in a box, it's processed, it's got plastic, it's got all, I mean, if you go to the grocery store, you know, 20, when you were talking about that, 20 years ago, you were, you were buying a head of lettuce to make a salad, you weren't buying packaged salad. So there's all this processing that has made it convenient for people, that has added to the waste stream, and, you know, you'd take that head of lettuce home from the grocery store and pour it out, and you'd use the whole thing, but you wouldn't have a plastic bag with it, or, and you wouldn't have the plastic pouch with the Caesar's dressing in it, you would have made your own or, you know, had one jar of it. So there's a lot of things, just, I went to the grocery store for the first time, well, never mind, I'm, I'm going to get off, but I, I was just amazed as I went through this grocery store and just saw all this packaging that has just made it convenient for us to, to do it. Think of, think of, think of even our deli right here, that's, you know, you can go in there and pick up a salad that's pre-made, that 20 years ago, it would have probably been in a, a white box, not a plastic box, or maybe not even made that way.
And now in a plastic box, it can't be recycled on top of it, so...
Right. I, I stole your thought, he asked you, but I just was thinking...
No, I appreciate it, I think that the packaging is, is definitely been our downfall, the convenience for the consumer, but I think back to your, your points, the industry is shifting, I think we're going to see more product stewardship, similar to e-waste recycling, where those manufacturers are held accountable, kind of for the end of life of their products, so that we aren't just trying to make plastic bottles into sweaters, that we have more opportunities, or just we're not generating them in general.
But one trend that also could, could have factored into that, you know, let's say, let's take the container there, 20 years ago, it might have been made out of glass, much heavier, denser material. There's certainly more containers in the waste stream, so there's more volume, but they don't necessarily weigh more, and that's part of the issue in, in recycling metrics, is are we measuring the right thing by measuring pounds?
Right.
And tons? Because it's a different lighter weight material today than what it was 20 years ago, so that, that could be part of it.
And the, just think of the, the online shopping, how many packages are being delivered today via the post office, UPS, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, at Christmas time, that weren't even happening? All that packaging that's out there versus going to the store and buying it off the shelf and taking it home and buying several things at the same time? Thing of all those trucks and airplanes running around delivering that stuff, we got how many, an acre a day of a roof being put on Amazon over here? And it's going to take them 30 days to complete that roof, 30-acre roof. All that stuff's going to come out of there and it's going to be packaged.
Yep.
Challenge.
The last thing, I don't believe I saw mentioned on it, but it's current and it's political, and I use my language, I'm sorry, the, what do I let go? Cap and tax, let's be serious. Another thing that could impact our solid waste system and add costs, so in fact, we're going to, at 11, we meet to talk about some comments on that. So there's a lot of things going on in solid waste, I enjoyed your report, I thought it was, Mr. Rose, could be a lot more work to do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We're, let's see, we're asked to accept it, and I'm in favor of that.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we accept recommendation, the solid waste and energy final report from Gresham, Brickner, and Ratten, Inc.
All right, I'll second the motion. Did I say something wrong the first time? I didn't get what you commented on.
I probably did.
Yeah.
I always do.
All right, any further discussion?
That's good.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, our final action item this morning, we consider adopting an ordinance amending the Marion County Urban Zone Code by emergency procedure. Brandon, Brandon Wright, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record, Brandon Wright, staff representing the Planning Division of Public Works. Jurisdictions in Oregon may permit accessory dwelling units in residential areas within the urban growth boundary. ADUs are a housing option that can provide affordable, long-term housing for urban residents. In Marion County, Aurora, Kaiser, Salem, and Silverton have all adopted ADU provisions. Marion County Board of Commissioners initiated a process to consider amendments to the Marion County Urban Code on June 21st, 2017. The Planning Commission held a work session and then a hearing on August 1st, 2017, and made a recommendation to the board. On November 29th, 2017, the board held its own hearing to consider amending the Urban Zone Code. After receiving testimony at the hearing on November 29th, the board closed the hearing and left the record open until December 12th, 2017, for additional testimony regarding standards that should apply to manufactured dwellings used as accessory dwelling units. Staff researched those standards and determined that U.S. Housing and Urban Development sets standards for the construction of manufactured dwellings. HUD has established standards for manufactured homes since 1976, and the standards have not changed much over time. HUD began participating in the Energy Star program in December 1997. This program is voluntary for manufacturers' manufactured dwellings and appears to improve energy efficiency overall as provided earlier by the Super Goods Sense program that the county and many jurisdictions in Oregon participated in. The Oregon Manufactured Housing Association suggested the county apply the Energy Star certification to manufactured homes being used as ADUs. Planning staff recommends the board establish a standard that a manufactured dwelling used as an ADU be Energy Star certified in order to provide energy efficiency and save on costs for heating and cooling the housing unit. Because state law already permits ADUs in urban areas, and the county is permitting them by zone code and adopting standards, and because there may be existing ADUs that could use the adjustment process to be determined to be legal if this code is adopted, staff recommends the ordinance be adopted by emergency procedure so that the exemptions go into effect upon adoption. With that, I'm available for any questions you may have.
All right. Brandon, I don't have any questions, we've worked on this, I guess, main thing is it should open some possibilities of more, what do you would call them, home sites, that isn't exactly the word I'm looking for, but should expand our inventory in the county in some...
Should provide a lot of opportunity for new opportunity for people for a whole variety of housing units that are smaller than the primary dwelling on the property, but provides some different housing choices.
Okay. They've dealt with setbacks and conditions trying to make it acceptable and reasonable. So, Commissioner, if you're prepared, would like to accept the ordinance by emergency procedure, adopt it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we adopt the ordinance amending the Marion County Urban Zone Code by, Code by Emergency Procedure, reading the title, by title only twice. I get that right?
Oh, pretty close. The idea is to just read by title twice first, then adopt the ordinance, if that's your motion, I'll second it.
Sure.
Sure. All right. Been moving, seconded to read the ordinance by title only twice, and I'll find that title. Oh, first we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. In the first reading, this is in the matter of an ordinance amending Marion Code, County Code Title 16, Urban Zone Code, by adopting standards for the development of accessory dwelling units and declaring an emergency. Now for the second time, in the matter of an ordinance amending Marion County Code Title 16, Urban Zone Code, by adopting standards for the development of accessory dwelling units and declaring an emergency. And now a motion to approve the ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we adopt an ordinance amending the Marion County Urban Zone Code by emergency.
All right, I'll second it, it's been moved and seconded to approve Marion County Code Title 16, adopting standards for accessory dwelling units. Any further discussion? Hearing none, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you, Brandon.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Been a long road.
Yeah, you did do a lot of work on this one and looking around.
It's a good thing, though.
Thank you.
All right, the last thing to do this morning, and this is a short list, but it's holiday time, the places we'll be together in the coming week, in a half hour, 11 o'clock, we'll have a, it says radio show preparation, what it is, talking about our solid waste system, carbon footprint, as Commissioner talks about, in preparation for a, a radio show presentation this afternoon. May be canceled tomorrow, 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock, City of Salem, Marion County Meeting, Sassy Union, 1244 State Street in Salem. Next Wednesday, oh, there isn't much, oh, we're closed for Christmas, is that something new?
Yeah, that's good.
Pretty happy about that.
Yeah.
Then the next board session is next Wednesday at 9, 9 o'clock in the morning here in the Center Hearing Room. That's followed on the 27th with the Marion County Housing Authority interviews, we're looking for a new director there, that'll be in the Mount Angel Conference Room, 5th Floor, 555 Court Street in, in Salem, and that's followed at 3 o'clock to 4 o'clock with a work session, a construction project update, Silverian Conference Room, 5th Floor, 555 Court Street. Some projects going on, juvenile detention, public safety, out on Omsole Highway, and, and some more work that we want to make final decisions on, having to do with the juvenile facility on Center Street. Working hard to update all of our Marion County facilities, and actually, we're getting near the end. You said at the beginning, there were some things you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, I think, the one thing we already did, but, yeah, there's a really good example of Regional Solutions Project, you know, we have May Trucking Company up Brook Lake Road, Oregon's largest trucking company, and looking...
I didn't know that, is it?
Yeah.
Wow. I see all the trucks I've just gone by.
I believe I heard that, I, I...
They're pretty big, leave it at that, then you can't be wrong.
Right. And in fact, they're all throughout the United States, and they're doing some expansion, they really want to stay here and, and really want to expand here. We've been working on this project for a long time, yes, just yesterday, we had a meeting with the same group, Regional Solutions from the Governor's Office, ODOT, our Public Works Department, Cindy and Julia and Alan did a great job preparing for this meeting, May Trucking was in the meeting, I was in the meeting, and we've got a, a potential study that needs to be done to help move forward with what the ingress, egress, you and I don't get all the, the details, I'm way up here on it, but there was an agreement made yesterday of what that should look like, and we have in our lottery funds, in our budget, some infrastructure, remember, we started that about two years ago? This is a prime...
It's exactly the kind of thing I like, by the way. That's exactly the kind of thing I like, by the way.
So I, May Trucking's going back, and they're having a meeting, I believe, today to decide if they want to, there's a, we sliced up the study. Public Works is putting in some planning money because they need some information out of it. ODOT has put in some money because they've got some work out of it. May Trucking were asking to put in some money, and if they come back and say yes, I want to commit some of that or have the board look at committing some of those lottery infrastructure dollars to help with them, up to $50,000 to help with this study. And I just wanted to bring that up. I've already asked staff to do whatever it takes to bring it to us on a formal basis, but I wanted to...
This isn't an agenda item, but I...
Right, I just wanted to just discuss it.
Just tell you, I like the idea, and so let's see where it goes.
Yeah, just kind of throwing it out there because it's going to have to move pretty quickly to get this work done, but a good example of how we could use our economic development funds to help companies that need help.
I thought you might be going to talk, I saw pictures of you in Gates last night.
Oh, yeah, I can sure of that.
It's the second, anything new, or how's that go?
It was the second of two, well, actually, third Army Corps meeting that I've been to in the last two weeks. First one was on the water reallocation. That ship sailed, and it's just going down the road on the reallocation. The second one was here at South Salem High School about the dam and the reservoir, and then last night was the same thing, the dam and the reservoir, and tremendous turnout at Gates, fire hall, the place was full. Army Corps shared what they were doing, kind of an open house, and then they spoke about it. I think you know this, I don't know for the people that are watching, that they have a substantial investment coming up that they have to make for some of this mitigation stuff. Detroit is now on the list to actually put in a mixing tower.
Crazy. Don't they have those? They don't even work.
Commissioner Nyquist showed up and hand-delivered a letter, I guess, from their commission about them opposing this.
So we should do the same, we certainly have to.
We can talk about it, but basically, they're going to put in a water mixing tower on the reservoir side, and to do that, their preferred alternative is to take the reservoir down, maybe for three years, maybe longer, and do this in the dry, but they've got tremendous challenges. They say they're sixty percent there on their design, but can imagine this, first off, they have to, that dam has to be in place for flood control, like right now, and they said that the contractor would have to be able to move out within a 24-hour notice coming up, like, you know, this week. They would have said, hey, rain's coming, you got to get out. I don't know how you've got the issues of, well, we just had this spill this week, right? This last weekend on the gasoline? And we had to shut down pumps in Gates and...
Staton, Salem.
Staton and Salem. And Gates was almost out of water until they were able to turn their pumps on because they got a clear yesterday from EPA. Salem, I think, may be turning theirs back on today. They were going to do their own sampling, but that's an example of, if you take that lake down in the summertime and you don't have enough water behind the dam, people aren't going to have water. I don't know how they're going to do it.
And how's that work for water, for irrigation, for fish?
Irrigation and fish.
And, don't they have one of these or two that they've already built, like the Mackenzie?
Cougar, I think, cougar, yeah.
And it doesn't work?
Well, yeah, I don't know those facts, whether it's working or not. I mean, common sense tells me when you're trying to get a water temperature from the bottom and it's cold and you're pouring water over the top, you might not be as efficient as if you could draw the water from the middle, right? And you wouldn't have to release as much water. But they still have minimum flows they have to meet and all that, so it's...
That's a mess.
It is really going to be, it's going to impact a lot of people, and it's good to see that a lot of, a lot of people were involved. Merkley's people were there, Schrader's people were there, we were there, Roger Nyquist was there from Lynn County, and several of the mayors from the area were there. Tim was there, Jim was there, Detroit, Mill City, so. It was a busy day yesterday.
Let's move to something happier.
All right.
This is the last meeting before Christmas.
Yeah.
So, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, and to you and your family as well.
It's all set up, but it's good.
We're going to be...
They ever talked about snow, just a little chance.
I know, New Year's weekend, for sure, is what we're talking about, and it's going to get cold, so make sure you've got your pipes and everything covered up, and you've got your scarves and your boots in your car and everything you need in case you get stuck someplace.
And then actually, next week is my last meeting as chair. Now, I want you to watch closely, because I'm going to give you a demonstration on the correct way to rotate and accept your fate. I just want you to watch.
You know, I never learn, though. I keep trying.
I always think...
It's kind of my life story. I try, and I try, and I try, and I just keep trying.
All right, well, keep trying.
I will.
With that, let's call this meeting adjourned.